Call the regular scheduled January council meeting. To thank all of the citizens and visitors and guests that's coming out tonight and everyone that's watching on our via social media account. We'll start by our opening with our prayer and our pledge. I ask Reverend Woods that he will lead us in prayer tonight.
I've often in heaven again be thanking now for just being so good, so gracious to us. Again, we thank you for allowing us to see twenty twenty-four. The master realizing that many didn't make it this far, but God, we want to say thank you right now for allowing us to see this beautiful day. God, we're here tonight for city business. We pray now that you would like your spirit to guide us and that you have your way in this meeting. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Face the flag, Reverend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Should've brought up here a letter. Leaders in the pledge. That's the best we ever done to pledge. You call a roll, Miss Clerk.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Lau.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
I would say happy new year to everyone. Hope everyone had happy holidays and enjoyed their families over the holiday season. Got one set of minutes to approve around our December council meeting, December eleventh. If there's no changes or corrections to those minutes, do I have a motion that we approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lau, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, all in favor, if you would, cast your votes. Look like we down. All in favors, oh, never mind, there we go. Would you say you stood a vote there?
Oh, yeah, ready?
It look like Suzanne got yours now, it ain't working. Our motion here, first on my report, let everyone know that we will be closed on January fifteenth in observation of Martin Luther King Day. And also, speaking of the MLK Day, we have Ms., yeah, she is there, Ms. Wanda Robson from the Martin Luther King Parade Committee asked her to comment if she would share some of the details about the parade and the event that's coming up to celebrate. So, Ms. Wanda, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how are you?
Happy new year.
All right.
I'm just thankful to be here. It's a blessing, it's a blessing. And to Mayor McTisick and the whole council, to the audience and the whole city of Bolivar, I bring you greetings from the Bolivar Hardeman County Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Parade Committee, President Monroe Woods, and I'd like to ask you all to keep him lifted up in prayer. He had to leave today to go to California. He had a niece to pass away, so he won't be with us for the parade. So, just keep him lifted up in prayer. But I thank you all for welcoming me, and I just wanted to welcome everyone to our thirty-second annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Parade Celebration. It will take place on the Saturday, January the thirteenth. At two o'clock PM, the lineup will begin at the Bolivar Elementary School parking lot. It will begin at twelve o'clock, you know, and we come and prepare for the parade, and we should be starting at two. And we look forward to you, Mayor McTisick, hope to see you there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And all the EMS, all the department heads, if they can be there, we'd be glad, and we just celebrate together. And our mission is to coordinate an annual community parade to observe our national holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. So, if you have any questions, you can contact me at seven three one five one eight five eight nine six. And we all know what Dr. King stood for, nonviolence, justice for all. And so, that's what we want to emulate and commemorate him not only that day, but each and every day. Most of all, God, honor him. So, do we have any, do I have any questions, anyone? Feel free to put your vehicles, walk, whatever, children, organizations, praising.
What's the entry, y'all paid anything to?
There's no fee. We had asked for donations.
Donations, okay.
If people would like to give donations, but there's no set fee, we asked for donations to help defray the costs.
Right.
That we incur for, see, we have to get liability insurance that ensure everyone along the parade route and the participants and everyone along the parade route.
So, we contact you for that?
Yes, sir. I mean, well, when you come, if you get there, you come into the Bolivar Elementary School in the foyer or in the lobby, and you register, your vehicle or organization or whatever, or yourself, register, and you will be given a number and be put in line, and if you want to make a donation then, you know, we'll have our treasurer on site to receive any contributions. We appreciate it very much. And we want to go higher and higher each year, okay? Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Ms. Wanda, we appreciate you all working.
We thank you guys. Hang on in there.
Yes.
Have a blessed year.
Next, I ask Ms. Lisa Raines if she would come forward, please. So, got a congratulations in order for her. See, I read this little article here. So, congratulations to Ms. Lisa, who was, congratulations to Ms. Lisa, who was selected as the Tennessee School Nurse Administrator of the Year. Nurse Lisa is a supervisor of health services for Hardeman County Schools. We are proud of our health services department and the recognition is well deserved. Raines has served as a school nurse throughout Hardeman County Schools for twenty years and has served as supervisor of the health services for the past eight years. During her leadership, Raines has placed a school nurse in every school, as well as designating each school with a HeartSafe certification by meeting criteria from the Bolivar Pediatric Cardiology Team. And in twenty eighteen, a partnership with the Hardeman County Community Health Center opened a school health clinic at Bolivar Elementary School to provide health services to all of our students and staff during the school day. She plans to start telehealth services throughout school health clinic, which are underway, and Raines serves on various state and local health-related boards. Her motto is that healthier children make better learners. She stated that she is proud to be a Hardeman County, and she feels very privileged to have served our students over the years. So, we want to say congratulations to you, and we're so proud of you, and thank you so much for representing Bolivar and all of Hardeman County Schools in such a great way. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you very much.
If you want to say the thank you.
Well, I just want to say that I'm honored and I appreciate that, and I'm also very privileged to have served and cared for many people in Hardeman County. I've been a nurse for forty-one years, a school nurse for twenty-eight, and so, I've made a lot of relationships with a lot of different people, and most of you sitting up here have met through the years, and I just want you to know, I feel honored to be a part of the city of Bolivar and Hardeman County. And I also want to thank each one of you for maintaining high standards for the city of Bolivar, and I appreciate your public service.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
We're gonna go eat.
Hold on, we all go together. Next, I'll ask if Ms. Mamie Polk will come. We all know Ms. Polk, and want to take the time to say thank you so much for sharing your great husband with the city of Bolivar and all of Hardeman County, and we want to just take this time to recognize him on the city level. We got, I took some excerpts from his obituary, because it was a lot that he done, but I just wanted to highlight some of them. Dr. Thomas Earl Polk was born December thirteenth nineteen forty-eight, to the late Lee Toy Polk and Rosie Lewis Polk in Grand Junction, Tennessee. Dr. Polk confessed to hope in Jesus Christ in early age and joined the Hopewell Missionary Baptist Church in Grand Junction, and other church affiliations included New Bethel, MB Church in Bolivar, Hill Field Baptist Church in Toone, and also, he was a member of Bethlehem MB Church in Bolivar and remained a member until his death. He attended elementary school and high school in Hardeman County School Systems. After graduating from high school, he received a Bachelor of Arts degree from Lane College in Jackson, a Master's Degree in Education from Prairie A&amp;M University of Texas, and Leadership and Special Education, and Education Specialist Degree from Union University in Education Leadership, and a Doctorate of Education from the University of Houston in Leadership and Policy Studies. Thomas was united in holy matrimony to his elementary, high school, and college, sweetheart, Mamie Griggs Polk in February of nineteen seventy-three. God bless his union of fifty-one years with two loving sons, Bradford and Brandon Polk.
Blessing.
Dr. Thomas Polk's professional career enhanced the lives of many students and colleagues. Prior to his illness, he was serving as the Director of Transportation for Hardeman County School System, and previously, he served as the Director of Alternative School, Supervisor of Instruction, Assistant Principal, and Special Education Teacher in Hardeman County School System. Dr. Polk's professional and community involvement in Hardeman County was impeccable. He was a servant leader in the county and participated in numerous civic and political organizations and activities. For example, he was an elected member of the Hardeman County Commission, previously served as an elected Hardeman County School Board Member, also served on the Exultra Board for the City of Bolivar, the Hardeman County Districts Board, and the Tennessee Foster Review Board. In March of twenty twenty-three, he received the key to the city of Bolivar for his support in the community. In addition, Thomas worked at Dixie Funeral Home in Bolivar to assist with arrangements for bereaving families. Dr. Polk was a charter member of the Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity New Iota Sigma Chapter in Bolivar. He was a member of the Hardeman County, Tennessee State University, and Lane College Alumni Association. Dr. Thomas Polk leaves to cherish his memory and love of fifty-one years of his devoted and loving wife Mamie Polk of Bolivar, two sons Bradford Polk and Brandon Polk of Madonna, and three adoring grandchildren Madison Maddox and Mackenzie of Madonna. And we just say we love Dr. Polk, we gonna miss him so, so much, thought the world of him. And I'll say this last thing, he was the first person I ever known to get Jimmy Singh, Todd Polk, Chick Carey, Bodine Didden, Johnny Shaw, and myself all in one room together on the same seat, and we didn't argue with each other at all. Now, that's a man there. So, but we gonna miss him, thank the world of him, and you know, we here to support you and pray for you through these difficult times.
He also was a singer, too. Me and my brother.
Oh, yes. I just want to let you know, my Tony Polk. He talk all the time, anyone who knew my husband. Time he met, but I called, my niece told me I had to come tonight, and I said, what am I going to tonight? She said, there was been something to your husband. I said, okay, if he didn't love this county so much and love the people in this county, I wouldn't show up. I would just like to thank each one of you, I appreciate you, I appreciate you thinking about him. This is my first time out, so, thank you, I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I forgot, sorry. He was an honorary member at Millford Baptist Church. And she would be in the choir singing. Supposed to be singing, you know what I mean? And other thing, someone told me, they said, well, one thing you can say, they either singing up there or they playing golf.
Now, my understanding also, he played piano.
Yes, a little bit of everything, a little bit of everything. Now, you know, it's so hard, because my youngest granddaughter is missing him, so, and I told her, I said, why are you texting him at night? She said, I know he's in heaven, but one text saying, I missed you, and I know you still watching out for me. Boy, I cry like a baby when I read that, but thank you all again.
Thank you, Ms. Polk. All right, last night I got on my report, I think y'all got a flyer, I think it might, I get email this to you. We received a grant that we're working with, the Memphis, I wrote it down, I'm not gonna say this right, yeah, Memphis Minority Business Agency, to bring small business support. It's a rural initiative they got, that they're gonna come and work with the city of Bolivar as well as the city of Brownsville, so Hardeman County and Haywood County. And actually, you guys, if you came to join us on January twenty-sixth at one PM, and if you can't, all the information that we get that's gonna come out, we will share that through our social media page, as well as through the newspaper and things like that. So, if you know anybody that's willing to start a business, grow a business, has anything that they want to do for his business support, if they need help with, this would be the opportunity for them to get that information out. So, feel free to join us on that day if you can. That concludes my report. Do we have any public comments on the agenda? All right, Standing Committee reports under electric. The BEA Board, BEA Board met on December twentieth for regular meeting, and they changed alignment standby time from nine to twelve hours on weeks. They are on duty for trouble calls, approved a new automated system vendor, they'll be updating all their meters next, in the next few months. President CEO's contract was renewed for another three-year term, and I just commend Mr. Kirk, I really enjoy working with him, it's been a great pleasure and honor, and I'm pleased that BEA has renewed his contract. They will also be closed on Martin Luther King Day on January the fifteenth, and you see the fiber update there, fiber project is one hundred percent complete, so now they're just still connecting customers throughout the county. It's all on electric. Next, Utilities, Mr. Knuckles.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Utility Board met last Wednesday, a regular scheduled meeting at lunch, and we discussed the lift stations at Ruby Lane and Martindale are installed and finished. Finally got our results back on our sanitary survey, which is a water inspection on the water system. Received a score of ninety-eight, which is pretty good. That's phenomenal, to be honest with you. And also, the board voted to use, in his agreement, Kevin is our Utility Board Attorney behalf of the Board and the Mayor, myself, we appreciate you accepting that position for the Utility Board Attorney. And gas prices are at sixty-five cents for January, which, that is very good, so come February, it'll probably be a little higher. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles. Chief, well, chief price is outside, trying to stand at home, Mr. Gallow.
Afternoon, everyone.
Hey, all right.
All right, but this morning, we had a total of twenty-five, no, thirty-two fire calls. Twenty-five of those calls was in the city, seven of them was in the county. As far as our training hours, we had two hundred and four hours of training, we installed six smoke detectors, we did eleven fire code inspections, and on the public relationship of this, we did three. And the, there was no injuries or anything for civilians or anything. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gallow. Next, next we have Police Chief Jones.
Good evening. Before I start my normal report, I want to announce that the shooting we had last July on John Street, the two homicides, we made an arrest in that case. A Mr. Wright, and he is in jail at Hardeman County, still pending investigation on the two other people. The shooting the year before that, that we had over at Madison Street, the murder, we have indicted a guy, but I can't announce his name yet, because he hadn't been picked out, so both of those two cases have been not closed, but then we start the long court process. And my regular report is as follows. Calls for service, five hundred and four, citations, a hundred and twenty-seven, accidents, twenty-eight, nine injury, nineteen property damage, we've had a total of fourteen arrests, one was a juvenile, thirteen adults. Special events would be Tennessee Highway Safety Office, we helped with the small-town big Christmas, and we did shop with a cop this year, where we took seven, eight kids to Walmart from grant money from Walmart that helped to get, and we actually took them and shopped with them and got stuff for Christmas. And training hours was three hundred and twenty-eight.
Mr. Jones, I'd like to say, I appreciate y'all just sticking to them cases like that and, you know, staying on like that.
Well, we've had, we had a lot of help, it was Memphis Police, ATF, FBI, TBI, I'm sure I'm gonna forget somebody, just all federal agencies and some state agencies that helped us work those cases the whole time.
Thank you. I have to commend the Police Department for a good job there, because a lot of people have been asked a question about the murder being, not being solved.
Yes.
Now, we, hopefully, we can, the family can, you know, the rest, you know.
Thank you.
And I just have to say, I have to commend the Police Department and all the other agencies, because it's, it's not just only us, it's, don't solve anything.
Yeah, it takes together, it's so much stuff.
It's gonna take a community.
Yes.
It's gonna take different agencies to come together and work together, get things solved. But can't do it nice.
No, we can't.
So, I just tell the Police Department that we commend them.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Next, Parks and Rec, Mr. Ford. Let's see, y'all get a chance, go on the Police Facebook page and the City's page one and look at those pictures with those kids. It really, it really brightened their day, and we, I had a parent call me, so, yeah, go look at them buying all them toys. It's exciting. All right, go ahead, uh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
All right.
Parks and Rec Department reports on the following, we in the process of taking down the decoration and lights from our drive-through light show at Sand Beach. The adult exercise line dance class continues on Tuesdays and Thursdays at five PM. Our youth basketball league, the six, seven, and eight-year-old league, and then also the nine and ten-year-old group, they'll start Saturday. So, if you're looking for some excitement and a lot of screaming and yelling, you can come here on Saturday mornings. And the eleven through fourteen-year-old group, they'll start, they'll register into this month and next month for their league. And lastly, our volleyball league was a success, we ended it on Thursdays for our adults. And that's our report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Knuckles. Next, we have Parks, I'm sorry, Streets of Sanitation, and I'll just say thank you all, I'm gonna do all this at one time, so I ain't gotta do it after all their reports. But all the departments that came together and worked together for the small-town big Christmas, they did an awesome job. So, I'll consider, I don't want to go out by every one of them, from the Parks and Rec at the Christmas light show down there, there's guys putting up decorations, dealing over sand, all of them, thank y'all so much. Great job. What y'all did, made, we was very proud of it, so, all right, go ahead. Pride, man. Good pride.
Right now, our leaf truck has broke down, it's been down about a week, we got some parts ordered for it, and hopefully, they'll come in this week and get it back going before we get a little behind on them, but we took two, four hundred and one tons of garbage to the landing field, and this month is bogey at a month.
All right, let's see if I get this right, no tires, no construction materials, demolition, and real.
Anything, three on it.
Uh, Mr. Eddie.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. McKinney.
Yes, sir.
We are one step close, we are one step closer than that, they come last week and got a pair of parking lots, so they should be coming back as soon as the weather breaks just a little bit and get their ass walking by. I have got you on the list, I promise.
I have to continue, the mayor was talking, but I didn't want to say anything until I asked this question, that I asked the question, so, since you answered the question, everything looked good, I will have to concur with the mayor.
But he called me last, he called me last week, and he said, the guy's coming, so I can't worry about Larry, gonna be on my back, and I said, yeah.
I was hoping they'd have a man for him, but they didn't, but they did come last week and prepared the parking lot out there, so they, they will be long to be back.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Eddie, thank you, sir.
All right, next, Ms. Jessica here tonight, so library, Ms. Jessica.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We, in donations and revenues, we took in six hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five cents. We had a total of nine programs with a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty and passive, with a hundred and five present for live, had seven hundred and ten estimated patron count. For our circ report, we had one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine materials circulated, two hundred and fifty-three computer users, one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight Wi-Fi users, six hundred and forty-one reads, fifteen history room visits, five microfilm users, five history room scanner users, twenty-two materials circulated in history room, eleven ILL materials borrowed, and eleven ILL materials loaned. And I would like to invite the council and people that are here tonight, if you're not following the library on Facebook, please follow the library on Facebook, we have so many activities and events going on that we keep advertised on Facebook, y'all follow us on Facebook and see what's going on at the library, there's always something active going on at the library, and I invite you guys to follow us and be a part of us.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. All right, next, compliance, Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You should have a copy of my report for December, building consultations, five permits written, three, building inspections, three, plumbing inspections, one, mechanical, no, and, or zero, courtesy notices, issued twenty of those. Wanted to give you an update on our slum things, I've got the letters written finally, we'll get them in the mail tomorrow. I do apologize to you, and all I can say is it's just totally my fault, I didn't get them done, but we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight scheduled for tonight. I've rescheduled those for February the twelfth, which will be the next council meeting. Those that we had already passed our sixty days, and we voted to go ahead and demo, their demolition deadline will be March the eighth, and we've got, they've got till then to file an appeal, so if they file an appeal, they'll be getting those letters in the next day or two. If they file an appeal, then I don't know where it goes from there, chance record. Yeah.
If they do it correctly.
Yeah, so, and also, I'm gonna be posting notices on at least those three properties that we've, we voted to demo, they'll get on there this week, and still got one property, haven't, we're gonna have to put a notice in the paper, I guess, because we still haven't made contact at all, no correspondence at all with them. It's kind of, kind of a telltale sign, though, when the letter comes back to you and it says refused, that doesn't mean that they didn't get it, means they just didn't take it, so, but that's kind of where we're at with that, but we are trying to get back on track and get all that, that going. I did not do any new ones, because we've got so many already in the works, we need to try to get some of these cleared up before we put some more on the table, okay?
Uh, Mr. Watkins.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Felicia McNeil, Woods out, is here, but a slum meeting tonight, you haven't been to get ahold of her.
Right.
So, if you would, after the meeting, if you can get with her and Felicia Woods.
Okay, I've got you, it's Felicia Lindsay, okay.
Okay, okay, Lynn, okay.
I'll get with you after the meeting, that's okay.
If you can get with her and, you know.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next, Tourism Community Development, Mr. Hill.
Well, December was Christmas, 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 so that was pretty much summed up my department, but I would like to say thank you to each of one of you that came out, Christmas parade, all the way through the three weekends, hope you had a good time. We saw a lot of, a lot of happy people, but a lot of people in general, and so, we're working on an economic impact study right now, and hopefully have that back for you for next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Alright, moving on to old business. First off, the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero seven to amend the official zoning map for property located at three twelve East Market Street. And this is the rezone of the property owned by Mr. Adrian Kevin Daniel from R two, median, median distantly residential to B one neighborhood business. So this will be our second reading, which will require, which will require a public hearing. So uh, is there a motion that we um, convenia into?
So do.
A motion to convene into public hearing from executive session? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Williams, first motion by Mr. McKenna, second by Mr. Williams, if you will, cast your votes. Alright, motion carried. We are now in the public hearing section uh, for ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero seven. Is there anyone here from the pub- public that would like to address this, the council at this time? Alright, if not, is there a motion to reconvene into executive session? Motion by Mr. McKenna, second by Mr. Golden, all in favor, cast your votes. Motion carried. Alright, we are back in executive session. Is there any questions or comments on this ordinance? This is the um, rezone from R, uh, from R two to B one. And that's the property across from the, oh, and it's building on sixty-four.
Is this where the uh, possible Walmart?
Yeah, yes, sir. Or is there a motion to approve?
Alright, I thought, are we gonna?
Yeah, go ahead.
We getting to discuss it a little bit?
Yeah, you, uh, that's for.
Um, well, I don't know if everybody knows exactly what this is, but near the American Legion, where there used to be, I guess there was a sawmill or something. But there were trees there, so you couldn't really see it. And now they want us to rezone that so that they can put a, uh. I guess I would say a busy retail business in that location. And uh, I know there are a lot of steps that have to come after this as far as meeting with T dot and whoever else, but the fact, the fact that the planning commission sent a positive report to us. But we still have to vote because the integrity of that area and whether that kind of business fits in that area, I feel like that's supposed to be up to us to decide. Or else they wouldn't have us voting on it. And uh, me personally, I went down, I took some videos, I looked at it. Um, I'm really familiar with that area. And first of all, it's a very dangerous place to put something. That's not a good place for traffic to go in and out of. Um, the sight lines are, are not good. I feel like it's just, if you don't believe it, you can go down there and try to pull out of there and see. Uh, especially coming off of that hill from the post office. That's already kind of a, a janky little intersection right there where the post office and Water Street and all of that. Then you're coming over that hill. I just don't think that that is really good, especially since I have already been in contact with our representative. Uh, the plan is to try to make that area a historic district. Uh, because the American Legion, the Sunrise, East Side Market, all, you know, even Bill Pam's laundromat. Uh, that was the downtown for African-Americans, when we couldn't go uptown and go shop. Uh, and all of that has a lot of impact on us. It should mean something to us. So I'm in the process of trying to work with our state and national, the National Archives. Just trying to get that area protected. And I don't think that a Dollar General store right there really fits in. We've got our little courthouse right across the street and we have another big antebellum home right there. So to me, I don't think that that type of business is what needs to go there. Um, there's only specific kinds of businesses I think would even be appropriate for that area, for that particular spot. Um, and I don't know at what point in the process, you know, it's, someone should say, this doesn't really work, or if that's on us. I know, but I just wanna make sure that we know before we vote yes to things, that we know what we're saying yes to. And that's, that's where I stand on it. I don't think that that is a suitable business for that particular location. And is it in the best interest of our community? Another Dollar General store. Or any kind of high-traffic retail business, actually. I don't wanna have anything against Dollar General in particular. I'm a family Dollar shopper though. But um, yeah, I just, I don't know if, what, what, what you all think about that, or if anybody thinks anything about it, one way or the other.
Have you had any kind of feedback from, from anyone in that area or concerned in this?
Well, anytime I've mentioned it to people, um, they have usually said, what? Right there? And, but mostly people have said that they feel like it's dangerous. That's a lot of things. They're like, how many wrecks gonna happen right there? That's usually the first thing people say, you know, but no one's here for the public hearing or whatever, and that's fine. But that's what we got elected to do, to make decisions. So these people that are working and whatever, with at home with their kids and this and that, who don't maybe keep up with things sort of going on. We're supposed to be representing their interests. That's what we're here for. So. What do you think about it? Yes, you.
Well, I haven't heard anything about it.
No, I'm saying, do you, do you think that that, when you think about like how busy that is, do you think that that's a good idea? I mean, I'm just asking everybody. What do we think?
That neighborhood, where I live, uh, right now, to me, is dead. We got to do something to bring it back alive.
And Dollar General's gonna do that?
We, well, we got to start somewhere.
Oh, okay.
We got to start somewhere.
Let me uh, say that, that, well, all, everything, we've talked about this and, and that me and you have. Uh, and let me first say, I ain't the first person to just jump up and say we need another dollar store. But what we, the issue that we have, what we're addressing is the rezoning of the parcel of land. What type of business and what people do with their property is on them. Um, so we're rezoning this land from residential to neighborhood business. The reason that the planning commission gave a positive recommendation is because that fit, that's appropriate for the rezoning. So a lot of times we don't even know what business is gonna be put there. Some people rezone property, not, don't even have a business in mind. They rezone it to sell it to a business in the event that one comes. Uh, this is a little different because we do know that it's Dollar General that's looking at doing this rezoning. I mean, there's purchasing the land and putting a store there. Uh, like I said, me personally, I wasn't the first one to jump up and turn backflip because we have Dollar General coming. But with Dollar General comes development, like he said, jobs. I talked to uh, Dietrich Mason, the, the guy that owns the property next to it. He was excited about it, uh, just because you're talking about at, at least a million-dollar worth of investment in East End, right next to his property. You know, that will bring the property values up. Uh, if we could pick and choose which business, we all probably, all eight or nine of us would have a different business we had in mind to go there. But when it comes to investing money and someone putting their money into what they're gonna do with a business, it's not for this board or the governing body to decide, you know, what business goes there.
But what kind of business, though?
Well, retail, we can, no, if it's a, we can, if it fits the zoning requirements for business, we can. We can't vote, you know, if you prefer Family Dollar over Dollar General, we don't vote on that. Uh, so some, Larry might want Walmart, Todd may want Dollar Tree. It doesn't matter. We don't own the land.
Dollar Tree is what I prefer.
Kevin Daniel owns the, Kevin Daniel owns the land and he's asking that it be rezoned for neighborhood business. Uh, like I said, if he decides to sell to Dollar General, or he decides to sell it to Wendy's to put a Wendy's there. That's, that's not in this, and we need to be, now, like I told, we, like I said, we talked about this, and some of the same concerns you have, I do too. But we, we have to be careful when we're voting and saying that we are gonna vote against a certain business because we may or may not like that business. Like, I like, and I know when I, I was shocked too, when they called me and told me it was a Dollar General. I'm saying, how many more can we sustain? But Dollar General's approach is they gonna put it, what, every five miles or ten miles? Um.
That's about two miles. But I guess I just may, I just, I guess I just mean whatever the type of business it is. If it's a high-traffic retail business. That is the concern. Is that what we need right there? That street is very narrow, doesn't even have any.
Chief John, what's the speed limit down there, coming off that hill?
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay, that ain't, that's not bad then. You know, it really.
Who goes thirty down?
I think some of them moved back to twenty-five, so the speed's not bad.
But you know, that's, that's, uh, me, I'm, I, I'm supporting the development of that piece of property right now.
That would be helpful for Duffco, I know that.
Well, that would be helpful for Duffco, be helpful to City of Bolivar. You're talking about a Dollar General to generate easily eighty thousand dollars on an average and pro, on, on sales tax alone, not counting the property tax. That's another policeman or another fireman, or I mean, you know, I, like I said, I wish there was, I'm probably saying too much, but I don't care for another Mexican restaurant myself, but you know, that's just me personally. But if there are another one open, I'm not gonna say don't open when you.
Unless it's opening at a place where it might be inappropriate. But anyway, that's just me.
Yeah, I get it.
I've already expressed how I feel about it and now if we, I, we don't have to be here all night.
So my thing is, whenever I think about it is, is what does the economic impact look like for East Bolivar with this coming in? It's probably gonna bring, what, fifteen, twenty jobs?
Five or six, probably.
Well, I, I talked to them, they said ten to five. The one that they got now is about ten, but they can't find ten.
And so another thing.
But it's also, think about what kinds of jobs too. Because we promote these places, they're coming, they gonna bring twenty-five dollar jobs and all this, and what they do is we, so it's gonna bring eight or nine minimum wage jobs.
Go ahead, Chris. I thought Caroline was gonna be done. Let's go on what you said.
Don't listen to me.
So another thing that we also have to think about is there used to be a Family Dollar in that neighborhood. And uh, East Bolivar, I mean, it's no secret, there's a lot of poverty in that area. A lot of people don't have rides to stores, um, much less go all the way to Walmart. And so um, openly, me and Caroline spoke and that was my thing, is I think that.
I just, I'm saying that particular location, that spot right there. That's my only problem. I don't care what comes to the area.
If we had to choose, uh, I wouldn't choose a Dollar General to be in that area. I wouldn't. But uh, as Mr. Woods said, we sometimes have to crawl before we walk. And so that's why I'm supporting it. That's why I'm gonna vote for it. It's not any special interest or anything else. I look at it, what's it gonna, how, what's the impact gonna be for East Bolivar? Is, is it gonna hurt it, or is it gonna make it a little better? And so while it may not be what we would specifically want, it's a step in that direction. So hopefully with the Dollar General, maybe there'll be a convenience store or something, something will spin off this, um, and hopefully increase business in East Bolivar. So that's, that, that, that's my hope.
I'll tell you something else on a situation like that. The more business you got of the same kind, the more competition, and then it'll lower the prices. Cause you know, like one liquor store, you know, everybody, it was high. You get the second one, then the price come down some because they get competition. So I'm for it.
Mr. McKenna, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve ordinance uh, twenty twenty-three zero zero seven, because I have to agree with the other.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Wood and Mr. Williams and others that have, uh, this, this. It, it's gonna bring jobs and it's gonna, it's gonna help the Bol, it's gonna help the city of Bolivar out. And like Mr. Wood said, it's, it's there's a no-nail over there. You know, you think you're going through a ghost town, you know, really. And I think that will bring, Dollar General will bring more businesses in that area. And that's what we work in East, East Bolivar. And for that reason, I'm gonna make that motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven.
Got a motion from Mr. McKenna, second from Mr. Golden, if you will, cast your votes.
I know I'm getting sabotaged this time, for real. You don't do it. I'm telling it. Shut up, Chris.
I was gonna say, we know you're gonna vote no.
I oughta throw this thing somewhere. And look, it went to gas somehow. Anyway. I will. I'm gonna just look at you for the whole time.
Alright, next we have approval of a six-month extension on the twenty twenty-two uh, Mack sidearm automated uh, refuse collection truck loan and the twenty twenty-four uh, front loader. Um, and let me make a point that on this, on the agenda, we added the other truck. I mean, on this, I'm doing both. Uh, so what we got for the newer council members, we got the, we got a loan on our sanitation truck on the, the new front-end loader and the sidearm. And every two years we would do a, do, do the buyback program where they buy the truck and once we sell the truck, then we take that and make this balloon payment. What's happened, the reason I'm asking for the approval, the bank has approved of doing the six-month extension, the truck is just not ready yet. Um, so when our new truck is ready, he said, March, said it? Supposed to be March, but we did six months because I ain't, we ain't, we ain't holding our breath on March. But uh, once that truck is here, we get the new truck, then we will sell the truck. We have that sale, the proceeds from that sale will pay this balloon payment on those uh, those loans. Any questions on that? Alright, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Golden, second by Mr. Laugh, if you will, cast your votes.
Now I know the secret.
Motion carried. Next, on the new business, uh, we have resolution twenty twenty-four zero zero one. Call for a public hearing on proposed annexation of territory into the city of Bolivar. I'm gonna take up A and B at the same time. Uh, cause once we pass this resolution, this resolution, we, we'll be setting the public hearing date for this proposed annexation. Uh, so what we have to, what we have to do here is pass this uh, resolution. And this resolution is basically stating that we're gonna have a public hearing uh, on this, on this uh, annexation. We have it set for the twelfth, which is our council, our normal scheduled council meet at six o'clock. Um, and the resolution, that's, that's on section A. Section B speaks of the plan of services and that we have to send out all of these plans. And this here, the plan of services, what I'm referring to, I'm gonna read all of them in a minute, uh, sends out, we have to have it mailed out no later than fourteen calendar days prior to the scheduled date. And place it in three public, public places throughout the city. And um, we should also have the plan of services available for public inspection doing regular business out there. So if anybody wants a copy of these, uh, they can come by here and get it. And we're also gonna put in the newspaper, we're gonna do as much as we can to get the word out. And I'm gonna ask the council members, if you would, please spread the word and get as many people here as we can get for that public hearing session. Just to hear from those citizens, potential citizens of, of uh, we, I'm referring to it as three-way. Um, and you'll see here in the plan of services, we have police protection. The city of Bolivar provide police protection related to law enforcement services in accordance with the city of Bolivar policies and standards. Fire protection, and that will be effective the date of annexation, annexation of fire protection will be the same way. Uh, provide fire protection, emergency medical services, um, on the effective date. The water service will provide water services in accordance with policies and standards uh, within their service area sewer. Um, we will provide sanitary sewer in accordance to our policies and standards and revise from time to time within twelve months of the effective date. And if the par- property is serviced by an on-site, on-site septic system, it shall remain. Uh, the streets, uh, city of Bolivar provides street repair, maintenance, storm drain, uh, maintenance, install, maintain street uh, signs with our policies. And that will be effective the date of annexation. Uh, sanitation uh, will be available. This includes commercial and residential. And we will include our planning and zoning and code compliances uh, on the effective date, as well as our inspection and code enforcement. Uh, so all of these will be service, city services that will be provided to those citizens. Uh, this will, um, this is just an overview. A lot of this will be more in-depth as time go along.
Uh, this will, um, this is just an overview. A lot of this will be more in-depth as time go along. This is a very long process before we get to the, uh, before we get to the actual vote. The citizens of that area will be doing the voting on whether or not this actually takes place. So it wouldn't be, this will be no decision of the board, uh, it'll happen at an election, so.
Like, how long are you talking, do you think it's like years from now? It's gonna take, it's years of long process?
Oh, no, my, I hope we have it done by the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, I hope we have it done by the end of the year, uh, and we can do a, uh, election by then, a ref, well, it'll be a referendum. Um, so, if anybody asks, this governing body, we're not, we're not even allowed to do, and they call it forced annexation now. Used to, these, this body here, we could've just said, hey, we wanna annex you, and bam, they got annexed. Uh, and now, it's been varied, it was a lot of lawsuits, and it's been varied. The state has made it, I ain't gonna say impossible, but it's, it's close to it. It's real close to, so that's why I hadn't really rushed it all, and with a lot of help from following M T S and care about, been reading every single line, and Kevin will be right there with us, cause all it takes is for us to mess up one step. And then, even if we pass it in the election, and we got ninety percent of the vote, if we do one step wrong, and Joe Blow don't like it, man, there you go, we gonna have to start back over again, so, um, but let, my ultimate, what I would like to see is many people that's for or against it to come out and speak, and like, everybody's gonna be affected differently. There are some that will see a savings, there are some that will be increased more on taxes. When I say savings, I mean, uh, savings and utilities. Our cost of water is so much cheaper than Spring Creek. Um, but so, everybody's gonna be a little different about it. I got a couple retired city employees that's not as excited, but they only two votes, so. Uh, but any other questions on that?
No, what, it, what I would like to see happen is we do a special standalone election, just because, so it won't, and that's what Ms. Amber asked for, too. So it won't get tied into it wasn't put on this person's ballot, or somebody voted down it that wasn't supposed to vote on it. Uh, but we, like, we haven't made it to that point. Uh, some people usually do that, they tie it on to another election. But I'd rather us just focus on that, instead of trying to mix it in with something else and slip it in without people knowing it. I'd rather us make it obviously known what we're doing and who's going to vote for what. But we'll vote, we'll, that'll be something that we decide once we get to that point. Is there any other question?
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I was just asking, was there any other questions?
If not, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-four zero zero one, second.
I have a motion by Mr. uh, McKenna, and a second by Mr. Williams, if you will, cast your vote. Motion carried. Uh, can we also approve that public hearing date for the twelfth? I don't do, Mr. Th, do we need to do that separately? Do we need to?
I thought we added it.
You might as well, man.
Okay, he said do it separately, do it again. So can you give me another motion to approve that public hearing?
The public hearing date, second.
I have a motion, Mr. McKenna, a second by Mr. Williams, if you will, cast your votes. I'm scared to screw this stuff up, man.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta do it right.
You got it separately, huh?
Motion carried.
Memphis tonight.
Yeah, Memphis, that's where I was coming from, they was annexing Bartlett and all them other cities, and then nobody wanna be in Memphis. So, uh, the last thing we got here is a public hearing for the city to apply for the community to develop, community development block grant, CDBG grant on, uh, January twenty-ninth at five-thirty. So, and I'll tell you what we're doing, we're applying for a new fire truck for Chief Price to replace his old pumper, is what this, uh, what that grant is for. So, is there a motion to approve that meeting? It'll be a public hearing on the twenty-ninth at five-thirty. Motion by Mr. Golden, second by Mr. Laugh, if you will, cast your votes.
No, it's not the ladder truck, it's the.
Engine two.
Engine, yeah, whichever, if you, I know what it look like, I can't tell you. All of them look red with water.
Motion carried, is there a, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKenna, second by Mr. Williams, so all in favor?
Alright.
Let's go.